Alrighty, good morning everybody. Ya'te abinnet. Vice President Lizer here on May 27th, Thursday. COVID-19 Town Hall update soon and very soon. We'll probably not call it a COVID-19 Town Hall update as we see our numbers favorable, but we're not out of the woods yet. So as we always do, we open up in prayer. We thank you for joining us here. President Jonathan is standing in the wings. Dr. Jill Jim, Dr. Dr. Phalia Fowler, Captain Brian Johnson, all waiting to give updates here. So we thank you for joining us. So let's open up in prayer. Akhiyat dien, God. We give you praise for another day of life. We give you this time, Lord, that we can meet with our people over the airwaves, the social media. We're thankful that we can give timely messages. So we thank you and may the people of the land be blessed. We pray for moisture, Lord, for our land, for the animals, and for the soon coming harvest, Lord, that needs to get initiated by your principle of sowing and reaping. So we ask for rain and moisture for the spring planting and continually through season, Lord, until harvest. We pray for bountiful harvests here in Jesus' name. Let many reports come in that they are enjoying a bountiful harvest, Lord. We call and claim him, Jesus' name. We ask for your provision, Lord, and it is great wisdom to conduct this meeting again. May the people run with the information at hand. Thank you that you have called COVID-19 at a lessening state, Lord, and eradication from Indian country and from the Navajo Nation, Lord, is our prayer, is our desire, Lord. We pray you bring it to effect, Lord, for many, Lord. We pray for those that are enduring hardship at this time, Lord. Be with them, Lord, in their comfort and strengthen up a nation, Lord Father, to follow you, to honor you in your ways, Lord. We thank you again and give you this time in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen and amen. So we thank you, ladies and gentlemen, here again, May 27th. Town Hall update here. We do have our President Jonathan there as we thank him for his leadership. So Mr. President, are you ready?
Alright, well, thank you for the prayer, Vice President, and everyone that's watching today. Today is Thursday, May 27th. And Vice President and I survived our birthday. So it was great. Thank you for the birthday wishes from the Navajo people and from all over the world, really. Appreciate, yeah, when, who would have known? We didn't plan this out. We didn't say, hey. When we were looking for a vice president, I didn't ask the question of, hey, is your birthday on May 26th? No. It's just, it just happened. So I guess that's, that's... So that's just God at work. And yeah, we celebrated our birthdays yesterday, Vice President and I. And it was great, all the wishes. But you know, we continue to work, continue to work. And today, earlier, we had our Navajo Nation Police Department Organizational Assessment Event where the assessment that, it will be provided to our Navajo citizens. Basically, it's what you have all been saying. Navajo Nation, better services. Of course, we need more police presence in our community. We have to find resources to, to do that, to provide a better police presence in our community. So that's something that this organizational assessment will help us in advocating for our Navajo people and for the Navajo Police Department. So it is going to be available to the public. Again, a lot of the comments that you had were incorporated into that assessment. And then to let you know, we've been, as you all know, have seen some low numbers lately. COVID cases. Yesterday's situation report for COVID-19, 30,793 total confirmed cases since we started. 272,997 tests have been completed, you know. Those are just tests. So some people have multiple. I had, oh gosh, I don't know. I lost count how many tests that I received. But you know, that's just a quarter, over a quarter of a million tests that have been given here at the Navajo Nation, the Navajo area, IHS, with the 638 healthcare facilities. have recovered, our Navajo citizens. 1,306 of our people have died from COVID-19. Thoughts and prayers go out to their families as always. Terms of vaccination summary, as of yesterday, May 26th, 2021, 248,435 doses have been received by the Navajo Nation from the IHS. 226,277 have been given. That's 91.1% of our Navajo people that have gotten these shots. We are coming on 100 and, almost 104,000 people fully vaccinated. To be precise, 103,993 have been... This is our definition here on the Navajo Nation of total vaccination. You hear on the TV, total vaccination, meaning just one shot. Here, where's our definition of fully vaccinated? Is two shots of Moderna, two shots of Pfizer, or one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson. 103,993 of our Navajo citizens have been vaccinated. And that's a large percentage of our people that have been fully vaccinated, you know. And some of these states are seeing some big increases. Of course, they use Navajo Nation numbers, right? Of vaccination. So keep that in mind when you hear states like New Mexico boasting about their high percentage of vaccination. That also includes the Navajo Nation. So just to remind you of that. And you know, we just also want to say too that masks are still mandated here on the Navajo Nation. So wear your masks. CDC has said that off the nation, throughout the country, you don't have to wear masks if you're fully vaccinated, right? It's kind of, it's like, well, how do we know who's vaccinated, right? Unless they show their cards, vaccination cards. But we're not doing that here because we're going to be continuing to mandate our masks here on the Navajo Nation. Especially as we begin to transition out of this pandemic and, you know, welcoming our visitors and our non-Navajo friends back to the nation in turn in time for tourist season. So just protect you and protect our visitors as well. So continue to stay the course, Navajo people. Wear your masks. Social distance. We're not talking about three foot either. We're talking about six foot, the original CDC protocol. Washing your hands for 20 or more seconds. Using hand sanitizers and yeah, and stay home as much. When we say stay home as much as possible, that means that, you know, if you need to go to shopping or you go to the, maybe to hospital for your appointment or get some necessities, time it. Time it to where, you know, you get it all done, maybe in one trip. And then you go back home. Just begin to plan that. That way, you know, you don't get close to an exposure on or off the Navajo Nation. There's exposures still happening. As you noticed and as I read, there were six new cases in 24 hours. And the contact tracers, I've done a wonderful job in, you know, getting the word out. So our Navajo citizens, I just asked that if a contact tracer contacts you, just be forthcoming, please. And then you have, yes, you have. That's how we slow down this virus in our communities. And stay the course. If you're, if you're coughing, if you're sick, don't chance it. Don't go to work. Don't go out. I've heard stories of people going to work coughing and, you know. You know, don't put your coworkers or people around you in a strange situation because it's uncomfortable for those around you. And you know, they're gonna let people know that they are uncomfortable. So please, if you're sick, then go home, stay home, get tested. And even if you test negative, you know, people are gonna wonder and feel uncomfortable. So it's very important that you, every one of us, follow those protocols, those CDC protocols when it comes to catching a cold or getting tested. So we, we just issued a new Public Health Emergency Order last week, late last week, and it's going into, it went into effect on Monday. And yesterday, I understand that flea markets were open. Well, it started Monday, but yesterday in Kianda, flea markets were open. Food stands were not there, I guess. But just follow the guidelines of the flea markets that are available with our, at our Navajo Department of Health website. And if you could share that website, Eli, Dr. Jim, if you could send that information over to Eli to put onto the Town Hall today, would be very helpful for our Navajo citizens to know what's going on. Let them take a look at those guidelines. So as we see low cases within our communities, we're lessening, slowly lessening these restrictions. And we are looking at reopening the transit system. And one thing too there is, you know, if we're wearing masks and, and also following the protocols, you know, getting your temperature checked before you get on. I think we could do it safely. Of course, it's not going to be full capacity. 100% capacity. It'll be most likely 50% capacity. And there was a discussion about should we ask to get their, our citizens vaccination verification? So those, those are things that we are discussing right now. But if you, if we have a mask mandate and that should be it, temperature checks, that should keep us in line with the protocols that are put in place. So Navajo Nation Navajo Nation Navajo Nation Navajo Nation Dr. Jill Jim Navajo Nation Navajo Nation Navajo Nation Eh do basohti shik enolini. Ashon ye go ben dashilneshdi ye go uh ya deskide. Ashon uh kodo algeda do eh. Da na da dohle walla hot eh di dukosun tschagi eh benina kodo. Ata da hallia da nishidi nishig enolini. You know, this this weekend is a three day weekend for some, four day weekend for the Navajo Nation employees. Uh Saturday, Sunday, Monday is Memorial Day nationally, uh Tuesday is Navajo Nation Memorial Day. And again, we just respectfully respectfully request and ask of you, you know, to be very careful out there. You gotta be aware of your surroundings. Some of you are wanting to travel, you know, we we continue to say now is not the time to travel. You can travel within the Navajo Nation. Uh and also, some of our relatives may be coming home. And we don't know, you know, where they've been at or if they're following protocols. You know, we we you Navajo people, we all have done an uh extraordinary job keeping the virus low. And just look at what happened with um Labor Day Weekend last last year. Just that weekend alone, you just saw the numbers just skyrocket. And so we just ask, you know, just be careful. Enjoy your weekend, uh you know, maybe time to not just travel, but to go home to grandma and grandpa, check on them. Have a meal with with them. Of course, you're gonna wear your mask, right? But we're just uh just letting you know to take care of yourself for these for three day, four day weekend. So take care of yourself, God bless you, and uh next week. Uh we'll be coming to you on Wednesday, ten AM. Um to give you updates on uh COVID nineteen. That's what these town hall meetings are are for, just to give you an update on what the nation's doing, how we're looking, and how the United States is looking uh overall in COVID nineteen cases. Doing a uh an outstanding job, Navajo people, don't let down, continue to mask up. Stay vigilant. So we'll take take care, enjoy your weekend, God bless you, and I'll turn the time over to our Vice President uh Meyer Lizer for uh updates. So thank you, everyone. Take care.
Oh Yate. Vice President Lizer here, thank you, Mr. President, for your update and the encouragement here as we see our numbers improve. We are not out of the woods yet, we do agree, and so continue to remain vigilant out there. Uh Vice President Lizer here, Comanche Nishla, tohanne bashischin. So Comanche dashiche, Ashi dashinelli. It's good to be with you all here on the May twenty seventh, day after President Jonathan Nez and day after Vice President Lizer's birthday. I wanna give a shout out to all you who gave us uh kudos and birthday wishes, uh literally hundreds of people. As President says, all around the world, we appreciate the prayers, we appreciate the 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 virtual hugs and the virtual atta boys. And uh we appreciate the support out there. Uh we did enjoy our day, had um dinner, uh kind of a luncheon with cake and whatnot uh with our staff in a large setting outside under a veranda, so. Uh it was good, uh food's great, and uh the love was even greater, so we appreciate that. And um here we go on, uh another another year of uh working hard for our people. So appreciate our president's leadership. Uh times like this year, it's easy just to model uh the the leadership of uh your president. And you all have done that over the time, the year, and a couple of months or so, two, three months in this pandemic. As we see numbers improving, we appreciate you uh being remaining vigilant as well. As I always do, give updates here, and then I'll touch a little bit on the economic recovery and what it looks like here on the Navajo Nation. Uh United States, US COVID cases are down, and we have more than fifty percent uh since the start of May as the country averages one point seven million daily vaccine doses have been administered daily. So the United States is doing well, uh probably catching up with the Navajo Nation as far as percentage and per capita, so. Uh we appreciate our health professionals, and some of which are on this call, so we look forward to their updates here really shortly. As soon I will call on Doctor Jill Jim, Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. Uh Arizona numbers, eight hundred and seventy nine thousand one hundred and two. Pandemic uh the year, the whole year and a few months in. Uh new cases, I do see a rise here, seven hundred sixty four new cases in Arizona, so uh continue to uh be safe out there. Patsy County, eleven thousand four hundred and two total cases year in uh with two new cases. So uh looks like we have, we're up a little bit there. Navajo County, sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty with two new cases as well. And we also have um um Coconino County, seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty nine with zero cases to report. So good job out there in the tri-county area of northern Navajo uh Nation and uh northern Arizona. New Mexico, we have two hundred and two thousand five hundred and seventy cases uh total year wide in uh New Mexico with one hundred and sixty seven new cases there. So uh the number's looking great, uh we expect them to continue to dwindle, and you're all a big part of that. So thank you for your participation. San Juan County, there in northwestern New Mexico, fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy eight year in with nineteen new cases. So there's an improvement, uh a few days ago, it was in the seventies. Uh so uh looking good there, San Juan County. Gal McKinley County, twelve thousand three hundred and thirty five with one new additional case to report. So we appreciate your vigilance there as well. Utah rounding out the third state in our tri-state area. Four hundred and five thousand and seventy eight with two hundred and sixty eight new cases. So Utah's looking good, they were kinda high there for a while. San Juan County there in north, I'm sorry, southeastern Utah, one thousand nine hundred and fourteen with no new cases to report, so good job there. Our own Utah Navajo Health System, one thousand and ninety eight with no new cases to report. So we appreciate you all again maintaining uh the status quo there regard to this pandemic. So uh social gathering, our messaging remains the same, uh President did encourage you all and uh um uh charge us all with the still keeping our numbers down and being safe out there. Uh practice physical distancing again, social distancing, wearing masks unless you are outdoors by yourself. But you know, still just being vigilant and with members of the same household. So we do see a lot of that in the marketplace here. Uh people from the same households are uh comfortable with one another. Uh especially encouraging here, uh encouragement, uh uh as we see graduation uh events happening, please be safe out there uh in these no large, large gatherings here. I know everybody wants to celebrate, but um just gotta uh use our common sense and be safe. Masks um will continue to be uh uh required for our president there. Uh wash your hands often and stay home when sick, I think these are no-brainer uh charges here. Uh and then uh a a message, a vital message in this here by Navajo, by local, this is the Nez Lizer uh campaign, our platform in which we build stronger economies. And one thing we saw during this pandemic is our economy uh needs to be bolstered, needs to be improved and enhanced. And we need to use these ARPA monies to catch up with the rest of the United States with regard to storefronts, with regard to distribution, uh exporting, creating things, manufacturing new things and exporting them, which will bring our local prices down even more. Uh so I know that's a big uh complaint, big issue here on Navajo. People say, I would shop locally more if the prices were lower, but not understanding the full economic uh uh economics of of it all. We don't export anything, so that's why delivery inbound um uh deliveries are a lot higher, and there's no promise of export going out. So uh one of the um uh best things for transport trucks is to arrive full, drop the load, and leave full with another load that brings our prices down. So just a little little tidbit there for you all, it's it's something that will happen soon. Uh continue to work on looking at new industries, new manufacturing opportunities to come to the Navajo Nation. Especially after this pandemic, there are a lot of opportunities, we're discussing those, we're having meetings, uh we're looking at bringing and bolstering our tourism here. Uh CARES Act, uh we still have some funding from that, uh we'll work with our new uh um controller here on what that looks like uh expanding the the latest of the CARES. But as we receive the new ARPA money, uh earlier this week, the Cherokee Nation had received one point eight billion dollars for a tribe that's the second largest tribe in the United States. So uh you can kinda read between the lines there, uh potentially a little bit more than that for the Navajo Nation. What is our dispersal gonna look like? When will it come? I say soon and very soon, probably. Uh if not an announcement this week, by week's end, then certainly by next week. So uh we're working projects here, there are almost ten thousand projects on paper right now being considered by the Navajo Nation with uh value of of these over nineteen billion dollars. Obviously, we don't have enough money to cover all those. So uh uh we have guarded against the free-for-all and um you know, the nation has just been behind uh for years, for decades. You've heard me say that our Navajo Nation is forty years behind the times infrastructure-wise. And uh you know, we do uh see that daily. You all know, we have citizens that don't have water, power, uh electricity, and we're working to bring those to the Navajo Nation. And during this pandemic, one issue that was really magnified was uh our lack of broadband and quality internet. So we're working on those measures, we wish to hang uh uh infrastructure in the air, put it in the ground for the benefit that will outlive us here uh and would be a legacy for generations to come here. So really working hard and fervently towards that, we continue to meet. And so we will finalize, uh be about finalizing that list, that project list, all the shovel-ready projects that are ready to receive uh the funding and the work soon forth with commence uh groundbreakings and the like happening at a feverish pace. So I appreciate your prayers, President and I, we do charge you with that one thing. Uh not only do, does everybody want to comment in on this here, uh please use your uh the, I guess, the the hierarchy that is there available to you. Uh chiming in at your chapter level, chiming in with the various divisions, you uh your council delegates and whatnot. Uh we do want to um continue to work for this, we have a little bit longer time in which to bring those projects to fruition, three years right now until two thousand twenty four to get projects a kind of uh signed, sealed, not delivered, but signed and sealed. And then we get another two years to continue to expand, draw down on that money, the two tranches that are coming. The first sixty five percent dispersal and then the next thirty five percent dispersal. Right after the uh one billion dollars that gets uh distributed equally amongst five hundred and seventy four uh federally recognized tribes. So that will be bringing the Navajo Nation one point seven million dollars here. So that's the latest here, again, I could go on and on, we'd have a heyday here talking about all these things. So appreciate you all, love you all, continue to pray for you. I'd like to uh alert Doctor Jill Jim, our Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health to uh prepare and to uh be ready to present here. Uh we appreciate her leadership, it's been known, it's been detailed here, and she's been recognized nationally for her leadership here in leading the Navajo Nation along with the President and I and our our twenty-four Navajo Nation Council and our DOJ as well. It's been all hands-on deck mentality, we are not out of the woods yet, and so we appreciate these timely updates from our health professionals. So ladies and gentlemen, Doctor Jill Jim, our our Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. Yate.
Yes, Yate Benes Montani. Uh Vice President Lizer, thank you for your kind words and also your updates regarding the pandemics. Always um good to hear that um every week from you and also President Nez Nodoshiche. Um thank you for your comments and leadership, both of you, and um committing your um time to informing the um our Navajo people about COVID and allowing us and our partners to report back to you um to try to keep our numbers down and also to ensure that we move back into a new normalcy for the Navajo Nation. So um also is so hehatnan um. Shadat je se eh Doctor Jill Jim nishido. Donne nesheneh look oneshon kachin bashischin do eshien dashiche dog azofana edashinole. I don't know, this aren't eh ayisna shadow kashi. Um oh is isoshin ish ish da habesu. Um I don't um president though, um Vice President, but um yeah, has GBA, yeah, eh public health emergency order. Eh kladhi, we are still in yellow status, but di need eh na kijin uh or na kin na kijin da na na kin na kin na klan da nishadon. So a kashi de yo, um as a reminder, um eshien kwa fifty percent um eh took uh uh that uh most businesses. Um eshien been uh on foot eh twenty five percent in that like indoor dining eh they go up to fifty percent. Autumn Marina and parks that includes tribal parks, lakes, um those are some locations. Campgrounds and RV parks should be open on the Navajo Nation, but fifty percent. Um also, the museums and zoo um are also open as well. And so hope you guys enjoy some of these um areas this weekend when you're out and about. I know some of them are not open, even though they're allowed to open. We've been getting questions about Twin Arrows, why it's not open? It really is up to the gaming enterprise, so I just wanna inform everyone about that um particular casino. Tribal parks, yes, it's also part of the Division of Natural Resources. Eshe ado the the huddening, but I know the tour- tourism companies have been complying with and have submitted all their reopening plans and um they can operate and with the parks open. So I just want to let everyone know that's where we're at with the um reopening plan. And as President mentioned, uh regarding the flea markets and um roadside markets, just comply with all the requirements and the guidelines, making sure your permit is updated regarding any kind of um sanitation permit or either food handler's permit in order to operate. Um if you are hosting a flea market and you're an entity or a business owner, or just maybe yourself um on beside the roadside, um those all, and if you've done it before and if it's not, maybe particularly it was on your land or however, um roadside markets or flea markets have operated, the landowner or whoever is um managing that particular flea market and roadside market will be responsible for the safety um guidelines that were issued out. And so I apologize, I'm still getting the um website link on that one, so by the end of the town hall meeting, we'll make sure that we have it posted it um for the for the listeners today regarding the guidelines. So that would be kind of my general update around the public health emergency order. And then going forward, um I just want to still commend everyone for doing a good job, continuing to take all the safety precautions that you need to. And also, it's very important to get vaccinated, so um especially the young ones, there some of them are out of school now. They can probably have time to get vaccinated, look for the vaccine schedule on their webpage. Um and that will help us a lot to keep the and keeping the numbers down so we can hopefully go to green status one of these days when we've almost have eliminated the number of cases um to some extent here on the Navajo Nation. And and then we should be all proud of ourselves though. Um da eshini shanke do uh shik edo shitamne kwa eh di. Um ay ay utenek kwa eh nihitna edonlini. Uh ba da is ba da is so so um eh uh for COVID nineteen. Eshe al kwa eh di um la di le um uh outside the Navajo Nation, the balane do um. Uh they're 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 struggling, the at ayu uh ba da at seta, so nishie kwa eh hot ah. Um I just want to say hehe for just understanding and protecting ourself. Um our masana don nishite onlini do. Nishinale danlini da kwa bansebe ke so shi de tato. Do on kideyop um banse uh dansebe ke so kwanfa da ishin hik eh benando kwa eh di. We want to eh shipenado, we want to go to some sort of new normalcy and eh benina, if you're vaccinated and you choose to um social gather within the public health emergency order and still stay masked, but you have a lot of protection to do that, so. So, and I just want to reiterate that. Churches are still open at 50%. Ceremonies are still at 15 persons for ceremonies and also any sort of social gathering. So I just want to just reiterate that. Congratulations, every week, there's probably some graduation happening. We have guidelines in place as well. So we are not supporting any indoor graduation. So if there is some weather conditions that are not permitting a graduation to occur, find and have an alternative option or backup or possibly reschedule. Don't just move indoors because it's the easiest and convenient thing to do. We're still very concerned about large gatherings. So I see classic, the schools and principals out there to follow the guidelines. There's a reason why these guidelines are put in place. It's not basically just there to, for people to read. So, but otherwise, it's the safety of our students and the families that are coming to the graduation that we're very concerned about when these guidelines are issued. So otherwise, thank you very much for joining the town hall and listening to me and providing updates. And I'm going to go ahead and introduce Captain Brian Johnson, also a team member with our Health Command Operations Center with the Navajo Area Office. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Hello, Dr. Jim, and certainly thank you for your comments. I know it's continued to be a long road here with the COVID-19 pandemic and over the months and over a year now, just continuing the outstanding messaging for the Navajo people. And I also want to take a moment to thank President Nez and Vice President Lizer. Again, we've had a number of these live Facebook sessions, which have been extremely important for making sure that we're sharing the appropriate message and being transparent with the healthcare system here on Navajo Nation. Again, hello, everyone. Good late morning here on this May 27, 2021. This is Captain Brian Johnson, served as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service, worked with Ms. Rosalyn So as the area director, and of course, with Dr. Loretta Christensen, who serves as a Chief Medical Officer. And presently, as I've mentioned in recent sessions, Dr. Christensen is presently assisting with our National IHS Program, serving as the National Acting Chief Medical Officer for until here in the month of June. And, and we want to thank her too for her service. And also, I'd like to give, I guess, a big thank you to several individuals that have also assisted during this time where we've had Dr. Christensen assist at the national level. We've had Dr. Leslie Puyoma, who is the clinical director, serving up at, as Acting Clinical Director at Kenta Service Unit. She is a permanent employee of the Shiprock Service Unit, but has done an outstanding job of assisting during this time, serving in the acting capacity of Chief Medical Officer, as well as Dr. Wida Vincent, who is presently assisting in that area as well. Dr. Wida Vincent is the Clinical Director at Shiprock Service Unit. And for those of you who might know Dr. Vincent, just an outstanding person, an outstanding medical provider and clinical director. And then also, Dr. Eric Ritchie from the Chin Lee Service Unit, who has also assisted during this time as the Acting Chief Medical Officer for Navajo Area Indian Health Service. So we've had three of these outstanding providers who took the time to take on a little, bit of a more of a higher-level challenge from their service units, and we certainly do appreciate them for their efforts. So just wanted to thank them. I also want to take a moment and, and thank, you know, again, the healthcare team across the Navajo Nation. I know that sometimes it may sound like we're just being repetitive and thanking folks just to be thanking them. But, but really, from, from my heart to those out there who have assisted during this pandemic, and again, at all levels. We can talk about our providers, we can talk about our nursing teams, we can talk about our housekeepers, the facility engineering staff, there's so many of our administrators and individuals, our human resources. You know, it takes a huge team. And everything from, again, acquisitions and contracting to human resources and others, it takes a huge team to make sure that we're running a healthcare system that supports the Navajo Nation people. So we, we do thank you. And, and also to our tribal partners who have the same individuals supporting their efforts across the Navajo Nation. And then just, just helping with the communications through the Navajo Nation Department of Public Health. It's, it's been a really a great experience in terms of strengthening the partnerships and strengthening our communications and how we're functioning as a healthcare system across the Navajo Nation. So thank you for that, everyone. And I know that President Nez also mentioned earlier about the, the three-day weekend coming up, and in some cases, a four-day weekend, I understand. And so I want to, want to encourage everyone that, yes, we definitely should celebrate the Memorial Day weekend and recognize it, but also doing so wisely and making great choices. We've heard some conversation online today about the fact that the number of COVID cases have continued to come down. And that's certainly wonderful news. And I know that we've all, to some extent, taken a breath of fresh air and, and taken a moment to step back and think about where we've been and where we're at presently, and then the direction that we all have positive thoughts about the direction that we're headed. And very happy that, that we're in this position at the moment. And I think it was very appropriate earlier, President Nez, President Lizer, Dr. Jim mentioning that although our cases are low, we, we still need to be smart about the things that we're doing. We need to think about others and continue doing what we can to keep the number of cases down. I, I always like to mention that oftentimes in life, there are things that are outside our control. You know, there's, there's nothing that we can do about some things. We can't control the weather on a daily basis. We can't control many other things. But what we can control is and manage is how we continue to approach this pandemic. We have to respect it for what it is. And we have to make sure that we're doing what we can do to make sure that we're not putting others in danger and helping to transmit, continue to transmit the virus. So I also want to take a moment at this juncture, just with that being said, and just, again, I, over time, I have thanked the Navajo people, we have thanked the Navajo people for the diligence that folks have shown over time in terms of doing what's right and, and taking the initiative to protect others. And I'm certainly just been overwhelmed with that in, in how the Navajo people have responded throughout the Navajo Nation. It doesn't matter if you're on the north side, the west end, the east or the west end. Just so much has gone on, there's been so many people assisting. So we appreciate you for what you do and will continue, I'm sure, to, to assist in that, in that way. We continue to, as a, as a healthcare system, we continue to work with the Navajo Nation Healthcare Operations Command Center. We do continue to communicate and hold conversations, meetings, oftentimes teleconferences by phone, again, to keep the number of individuals gathering down to a minimum, but making sure the business continues, particularly the healthcare business, in terms of how we're continuing down this road of healing. And we're, we're certainly, again, our case numbers, I won't go over the specifics, but overall, our case numbers are definitely down, and that's a great thing. Our, we continue to do COVID-19 testing. And so for those individuals who are out there, just making sure that, knowing that that's available. We continue to monitor our hospital capacities on a daily basis, looking at, how many patients do we have? What, what areas of the hospital are they in? Are they in the intensive care unit? Are they in the inpatient unit? And just sharing that information to make sure that folks in leadership is aware of where we stand. And then I know contact tracers were mentioned earlier by President Nez. And definitely, our, our contact tracing capacity continues to be in place. And we just continue to watch the, any disease spread during the pandemic. So I always like to remind folks that although our case numbers are presently down and we're very hopeful that they will remain down, but again, we, we have choices to make, just like this weekend with Memorial Day. How are we going to handle the situation this weekend? Are we going to have large group gatherings? Are we going to have large family gatherings? This is, this is a critical point. And decisions need to be made wisely at this point in time to make sure that we're not contributing to increasing the number of cases. Because once the case numbers start going up, it is challenging to slow them down once that starts. And so please, I just want to, just to ask everyone and certainly listen to the guidance that the Navajo Nation leadership has provided and to the Public Health Emergency Orders. They're there for a reason, and that's for everyone's protection. And we definitely want people to balance and, and, you know, having fun and acknowledging the Memorial Day weekend, while at the same time balancing the safety of everyone. And, and I know that the Navajo people will, will do that and will think about that. So I, I thank you for that. This is a critical time. We may have thought that the critical time for this pandemic was in the heaviest of cases and trying to make decisions at that time. But we need to also consider this a critical time because we can either go ahead and push this virus into the ground and, and not, not continue the human, to human transmission, or we can choose to, again, to, to have large group gatherings to not follow the prevention practices that we've done for so many months now. And I know that that gets a little, sometimes boring to hear. I know that it gets old hearing some of the, some might say preaching, but it, it is, it still holds true today that we need to continue and please recognize this as a, a critical point in the pandemic. The viruses are smart. And of course, we know that COVID-19 is a virus, and they are smart, and they, they, they need to find a way to continue their lifespan. That's what they do. And over time, we've talked about the mutants or the mutating version of the, of the virus. We've talked about what we call variants of the virus. And that's exactly what's happening here. The virus is simply trying to adapt to its environment to find the most efficient way that it can continue to spread. And on our side, being the human population, we're trying to find the best way, the most efficient way to stop the virus. So this continues to be a war, and we need to respect it for that and just continue to do what we can control because we're going to win this war. And we're, we're well on our way. I just also want to mention that, yes, we do, as Dr. Jim indicated, we, we continue to be in the yellow phase and have been since April 26. And we're all very hopeful that in the coming weeks, we'll be able to take additional steps when we can keep our case numbers down even lower than they are right now and also following some of our other tracking and monitoring items that we're following. And, and that'll be a great thing when we can go from yellow to green status because that just helps us be able to further lessen the restrictions that, that we all are following at, at the moment. And we want, all of us want to get back to what we consider our normal lives. And, and we'll have to see if we ever get back to what we, we know is normal. But we've talked about our new normal over time. And, but, but one of those things we need to accomplish is getting to the green phase. And as Dr. Jim mentioned, although we remain in the yellow phase at this time, there was a recent Public Health Emergency Order that was passed through the Navajo Nation. It's Emergency Order 2021-11, which, you know, I do encourage folks to visit the Navajo Nation Department of Health website. They do post, it is, these, these things are posted on the website to give more information about the requirements during this Public Health Emergency Order. And again, that, that's certainly for the protection of all and looking out after all of our loved ones here on the nation. I also just want to make sure that I continue to, to share with the public that across Navajo Nation, our COVID-19 testing does continue. Whether you're in, you know, Tubus City or whether you're in Crown Point or Gallup or Northern Navajo Shiprock area or the Chin Lee in the heartland of the Navajo Nation. It, it's, it's important to understand that the COVID-19 testing does continue. And we know that, that we have individuals who have some symptoms that are consistent, sometimes this time of year. It can be difficult to determine, you know, am I dealing with allergies? Or could it be the potential that I got exposed to COVID-19? As President Nez mentioned, we do still have individuals who are getting exposed. We do still see a few cases across Navajo Nation. And so it's important to, if that should happen to you or your family or to your friends, it's important that they identify that and that they get tested as soon as possible. Because the sooner they're tested, the quicker they'll get a test result, whether it's negative or positive. And if it's positive, then there are measures that can be taken to stop additional exposures and to help isolate. And again, just making sure that we keep this thing suppressed. And, and we're wanting to do that again so we can get to that green status and go ahead and, and just hopefully end this, this pandemic. So I just want to make sure that folks feel comfortable still reaching out to their healthcare facilities if you think you need to be tested. Certainly, I recommend calling ahead, finding out when services are available, when, when the testing's happening, if there's drive-through testing, if, if there's appointments required, or if you can just do a walk-in to get a test. And they will certainly give you the options that you have at your disposal. Also, I just want to carry, just a little bit more information here or convey information about the vaccine. We, we do continue to have the three different types of vaccine that we've talked about over time, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. And so those under the emergency use of the, of the FDA. And it, it's, it's really important that we continue. And we do have staff members who work both for the tribal and the IHS facilities who work as a team to monitor our vaccine supplies for all three of these brands of vaccine. And so that continues to happen in the background. And we also continue to make sure that we're, making sure that we're serving that 12- to 15-year-old population that was more recently approved on May 13th for COVID-19 vaccines. And so all that work is going on. It may be invisible to you in the public, but in the background in the healthcare system, those conversations, that sharing of information about the inventories and appropriate handling and management of vaccines is going on. And I just want to thank those who are involved in the vaccine handling because it's a, it's a strategic thing that needs to be handled with care and due to temperature requirements and other things. And so there's a tremendous amount of work still going on in the background. And again, it was mentioned earlier that if we looked across the Navajo Nation, how many of our folks on the Navajo Nation that have received, that have been fully vaccinated? And, and that's right at 104,000 individuals. It's 103,993, so just under 104,000 people. And that's pretty amazing. We're keeping the administration, vaccine administration percentage at a high percentage rate. It's at 91% plus, meaning that any of the vaccines that we receive, we are getting those to the people as soon as we can. So we, we, we make sure that we're keeping our vaccine administration at a high percentage level. And I just want to mention that, again, when we talk about the critical status at this point in time, also, I just want folks to think about around the Navajo Nation. Think about your respective household where you live and whether your family lives around you and, and homes around, near you. It's important to understand that unvaccinated individuals certainly can still be a source of, of, of disease transmission. And it's important that we're finding that it is very important for household members to be, for everyone to be vaccinated as unvaccinated individuals can lead to disease transmission. And so, I just wanted to share that message with you to please encourage your household members, any, anywhere from 12 years old and older, to continue getting vaccinated. The vaccines are here, they're ready to use. Our medical care providers are certainly willing to do what needs to be done to get folks vaccinated. And so, we really continue to encourage individuals to get those vaccinations. And on that thought, I just want to mention just a few of my takeaways from today, just takeaway points. We are still seeing cases. The case numbers are low, but we're still seeing cases. We are continuing as a healthcare system across Navajo to continue monitoring the variants for COVID-19. And so, that hasn't stopped. And we're watching the UK variant, we're watching the other variants that we deal with, and that will continue. And I want to thank the Navajo Nation for working with the healthcare system on this. This has been very helpful. And then, continue wearing your masks, as was mentioned by President Nez earlier, and washing our hands. Continue our distancing. Limit our group sizes, again, for the Memorial Day Weekend. Be cautious and think about others. And then, the testing, the COVID-19 continues to happen at our healthcare facilities. And then, as well as vaccinations also continue. And remember, in terms of our vaccinations, what we're trying to do is kind of, we're trying to support the idea and the concept of community immunity. If we get everyone vaccinated, if we get a high percentage, higher than what we have right now, then we can actually create community immunity, which stops the disease from spreading, and it helps protect yourself. It protects your family, it protects your elders, and which is all, I know, very important to all of us. But with that said, I'm going to end my portion of the Facebook Live, and I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Fowler at this juncture. Thank you so much, everyone.
Yat e shik e ro shid ne. Chek do ni de shid e chik. May de shki shne eng shne. Adat hori chini pas shshin taba desh chet lasch etas nalle. Aro yat eh nan hidni do. Kodo e ben na. Ni hinat ah lini kodo nicha ha zee ala. Ako kache ala hati. Na mo na atla nicha ha de shid o. Kado e na na kin e ko kache ala atole. Aro yeha nichid shni do le shik e ro shid ne. And I want to appreciate President, Vice President, for your leadership and helping us dealing with the pandemic. Chol chot a e ya lato a bndi nish e do ni zeno. Ye go na nihne stha akos ntsanas e ta dahe bedi ni ni. Aro do shi chot a wachidon de. El do on de. Choh ita hotzado itad e konde nas go ne. Nijay e yat e ho na ney da ro eh ni zen. Aro ez e el ene dan lini ez ney ka solah. Solah shchi do aro. It's easy day jahe da a tsma yeha. Aro bech bahasa ana na feni aro. Cha na nle na lini oh na yui chapter jindah nishi. Ati kon hik e do nichid ne. E ya da hen sanitizer da PPE do ye ati bichro da. Da e do yeha. We know we still have some chapter officials that are in chapter staff that are distributing supplies, PPE. We want to appreciate each and every one of you for what you are doing for our communities. Yeha. Aro kodo saben hadit ahe public health order lini lto. Kodo shid e lini aro belgi jindah nishi eh cha de ni. Ako ka bi i kahe e litso i gi bi i ka. Ako e do ba ahe ni zen. Na de a si do tlajyong yego do tlajyong aro litsi. Aro na na ntsa hot a bi cha di. Ko ka de di do keshi jo ochebi da ti ka. Ko oyo a ni yeh i tsen eldo. Ako di de kos ntsanas e ta dahe de ni ni do. La ho en do lini. Variant de shid ne. Choh ati na ni shik e ro shid ne. Ati shi kon na do aro. Ez e pa hazli ko ez e pa ho no. Ako e di ka na kitat sahro de gaba da. Hegi ez e wa ha da ne. Aro di na atka ho liyani kodo a. Captain Brian Johnson yahol ne i gi. Eh ati do on da atka. Ko o da ati yo shidol na shi. Zin zeno eh ez e ni gojdo. Ga do aji na ha de to. Ka jo e do ati belna hazan. Aro ez e na belna hazan. Tsaskah belna hazan. Ako sah e yat e ya na hazan. E do ati. Tsaskah lini ka do bichro yeh da. Chon ne konde jo an hi ni ta e ya. Aro koshite na hor jishli. Da an hi ni ta eh anhin ha nasla dan hitne. Na atan lini do ez e in dan lini anhin ha nasla. Choh ako ita ako zin zendo. Ako hati si. Hanago hati si. Ako oshi yi yu litsa da su to. Chit an dah chit. Alana ita hati zi beni ye ho no. Eh gojdo. Ola ati yugo na tyl klo she. La to do bohne zada. Aro di nichina anthin lini. Nichid za be na ni tchin lini. Amasana e che anale ez e ama. Ata a ama ya shidan ah lini. Choh eh na ha na ho el ji shid o. Suda nichi ez e ito. Eh ya be na ni tchina. Ez e shi la na ha archeni shi oyikin dan ne. Na a ko be belna ho lne. Choh ha shi nza go shi. Anantchin solah. Aro kodo oyu has tuisani dan loho ni ta be ke da hasni. Ako a anil la ilin da has. Chit aro ye na ye nan hine stha da. Do an hi ni te eldo. Chok ad e kodo dishri gi ba hinne. Do ati la nichay da ne sket. Aro ati la ini chena da yi hinne. Kodo shid tere la di kon bohan ne. Akon de. Aro di ka bichro na hor. Choh she e bela go na. Echon Memorial Day dekne. Shik e shid ne. Chodhi e koe solah so ha shi ne la. Nichita enda iste. Ako ba hinne. Do ben na nichay ne sket. Aji enda ilka ho. Ha shi ne la koni hita solah so da ho no. Aro ha shi ne la kodo nicha solah so da ho no. Ta da hoto jish. Alana jo kon do ni ta ho. Na kon da. Nichita enda ba. Ako bohni za. Akon de. Anhin ni zo koni da in jossen. Akon de di de kos na e ta da. Ran ni ni chi do bichro ne ba. Nichi doni se be da da de. Ba jo eh be ne ba. Aro di be etel ka hen sanitizer lini da chi. Nichila an da aho. Kan na dekis. Escha de eselana hati dan hitne. Hot a in hilah. Akon de. Chodhi na kijeh nas. Da ka gijda. Es on da an nish da di gij. This week, four-day weekend ha lini. Choh eh ben na. Choh eh kodo ba na nihni ka. Be eto aho lliya. Aro la ko lhi no ka. Ha shi ne la oni trolizenda di. Si na ha ga de shi belho a. Eh ba aho lliya ro ba eto eto ha motsen. Ishtla atah eh aji. Ishtla atah chilka eh bela. Bela ho eh do ez de le. Sa ha la di nichid ne. Silke de kez tuisani lini ato la ba da atse da. Di ato ba da atsi. Yitna ra yitka da ra. Da aha na de do lta. Ot eh ez e shi ka o tsen de. Choh yego deh lini te akon de. Ez e ka el ya ha shi nza chit. Choh yego deh no ete dan hitne. Akon de kodo do ba ato ba atsehi yitna ra. Aro kodo hati bichro inna ho te ohi chah. Do yat e da shik e ro shid ne. Eh shi be ba aho lliya doni hitne kodo. Ez e il ina do na atan lini. And understand that the virus doesn't travel, people do. Nichi do go ney la ho ney da go. Nichi do eta ilna. Akon de chisun lini a. Be eto hamos be eto so. Chok de do ni. Aro di pasla go de so ya go. Be eto afo here. The queerish nishin da ha de. Aro a ni ha shi ne lae da esen. Aro yeha. Aro ade yeha. Hot a da dan de. Ben chisun da ha sna. Da do lini eh do yeha. Ako do o do o yi hot a tsu da keesa. O do yat e chak o zehi te a de nisho. In de. Chon nichi do be be ni zen. Be yikis. Akon de shik e ro shid ne. Suda anhi ni te al e ya. Be le di ka do nichi do do ni zen. So, the more people we get vaccinated, the sooner we go to green. Asha ba na da to. Se eh kodo juno. Do tlajyobi da de di ka. Ko oyu go a onda ya. Ako a do ba aho lliya shik e ro shid ne. Aro nza go. El ki na ka. On zad shi na na di ka de de. Stuita enda hor jish. Oyu na nish ho ma de. A do la 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 na shodhi oyu ba haski iye. Aro di Memorial Day. Ha lini ha shi ne la o. Di. Alade. Do yat e shi kon tsi il kees. Aro beje ho no na bichro eti ka. Shod a sutsana o lte ho. Aro eh na cho shi da lini o oha yu. Ba aho lliya do ta ho liya. La do da jini go shi la ho ete eldo. Eh do beh da aho lliya. Aro da achtla ne. Jini ho a ko o bichro jish. Akon de yego. Ta da anhin ha nasla shik e ro shid ne. Et aho lliya do sa. Yat e be chriya da. Yeho da ahi no. Na ha ha ni zen. Do iyon hi ni ni na atan hikcha de. Kon tsaga shi na de el ya. Kache na de mo. Ad shinda. La ton hikra ilsa na na ne. Aro ni eh ya. Niki ot la to eh ba ahe ni zen.